Article One. Amend Section 5.6.5 of the zoning bylaw. This article requires a two-thirds vote for passage.
Madam President?
Mr. Williams?
I move that the town votes to amend Section 5.6.5 of the zoning bylaw as recommended by the planning board and presented in the advisory committee in support of this town meeting by reading the text shown in strike through type and adding to both the text included.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a proponent who has requested to make a presentation on that, and that would be Ms. Neutra.
I'm Marion Neutra, 25 Prospect Street, and speaking for the planning board. This is about Sherburne's Elderly and Affordable bylaw.
Excuse me, is there, are there slides to go?
There are.
So if we can bring the screen down?
While that's going down, John Higley, chairman of the planning board, 14 Saddlebrook Road, the planning board voted unanimously in favor of Article One.
So we're waiting for the audiovisual problems to be ironed out. That's what happens when you need a good joke right now.
We won't start timing you until you can actually shoot.
I'm Marion Neutra, 25 Prospect Street, and speaking for the planning board. Article One is to change, to make certain revisions in the Sherburne Elderly Affordable, or EA, bylaw. This bylaw is put in place to allow for smaller, more affordable housing options, especially for seniors and downsizing adults who want to stay in Sherburne, but also to provide, in general, alternatives to single-family homes on large lots. It allows greater housing density, but it also preserves some open space on these lots. And it gives developers an alternative to the state 40B affordable housing process, in which the town has very little control. EA development is under local control in multiple ways. First, it applies to a specific property and a specific development plan, and rezoning and the plan go together. They both require two-thirds approval at town meeting. They're subject to all of Sherburne's normal boards, environmental and health regulations, and they also require a special permit that's negotiated with the planning board. In addition, there are many special requirements of this bylaw. In fact, it takes up multiple pages, as you see in your warrant. So most of these will not change tonight, like the limit on density and the open space requirement. They stay in place, but Article One will change three of the special requirements here. The first you'll find on page four of your warrant. It's regarding the location of EA developments. The current bylaw states that they must be within one mile of town center, but our new housing production plan envisions denser housing, more convenient public transportation and shopping, or smaller EA developments integrated into neighborhoods in town. And the current bylaw severely limits the ability of the town to offer EA zoning as an alternative to 40B developments, because 40B can be put anywhere in town. So the revised bylaw simply eliminates the restriction on location. The second change is regarding occupancy. Currently, the bylaw has two options: either it's affordable, that is 25% affordable, or age-restricted, that is over 55 with no affordable units required. But this doesn't really provide the affordable housing for seniors that we need. So we've added a third option, affordable age-restricted, in which 10% affordable units are required. This provides a needed housing option, and it also provides developers an alternative to a 40B development that requires 25% affordable. The 10% number came into this because it lets us keep pace with the state requirement for overall 10% affordable housing in town. The third change is on location of water and septic. The current bylaw is rather vague. It states that adequate methods for water and septic utilities shall be provided on the site. We want to revise this to say that public water sources, that is not municipal water, but water systems shared by multiple users, and wastewater treatment plants can be located on or off-site, for example, on an adjacent property, if it's permitted on that property. This makes it easier for large EA developments to install shared water systems and waste treatment plants that are both regulated by Mass. Department of Environmental Protection. This is good for us, because Mass. DEP requires strict standards and continual monitoring, and normal conventional septic systems do not. So the planning board is bringing these revisions to this town meeting now, because they allow us to consider the project that you'll hear about in Article Two. But it's important to understand that we've been discussing these changes for some time, and regardless of Article Two, we think they're good for the town, because they make the EA bylaw more useful for us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. There is a presentation by opponents of the article, and that will be given by Peter McStravic. Mr. McStravic?
Thanks very much for coming out tonight. Thank you, Mary Ann. For those of you that don't know me, I'm, I've been a Sherburne resident.
Excuse me. Could you state your name and address?
Yep, sure. Peter McStravic, 21 Meadowbrook Road in Sherburne. I've been a Sherburne resident for about nine years now, four kids, two at the middle school, two here at Pine Hill. I've been asked to speak by a number of my neighbors on behalf of our Meadowbrook Road community to express our collective thoughts on these two articles, and you'll see me again after Article Two. But with regards to Article One, we recommend that a no vote on this for a couple of reasons. And really, the first three are really points of principle, and that is primarily that we think there's too much in this article. Based on a lot of the research we've done on next-door Sherburne and the town meetings that we've attended, our collective belief is that not everyone truly understands ramifications of a yes vote on this. There's much debate in terms of what the overall impact of opening up the, oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Of relaxing the regulations around EA development. Particularly of importance, this one, yep, this is it, yep. We find that there's really too much bundled or nested into the one article. So for example, we're being asked to vote on really three very important issues or topics: the location of elderly affordable, whether they should be permitted to move outside of a one-mile radius of the downtown core, the fact that this brand-new category is being created, and then, you know, the third subject, which is certainly of interest to those of us on Meadowbrook Road, is the regulation that allows for septic facilities to be moved off to an adjacent property, right? So we think those three things should be separated into articles of their own and debated as such. The two other, the final points that we have that we're concerned about clearly is that the drinking water. So Sherburne has, you know, prided itself on years for the fact that we have the most stringent drinking water standards well above EPA and the state. And when we, you know, as proposed, the septic and waste infrastructure facilities will be monitored by the state, so they'll be held to the state's standards and not our own. And furthermore, as we learned last week during one of the town meetings, those facilities will be managed, most likely, by a private utilities company. And so we lose, in fact, our control over our water and our septic systems as opposed to gaining control. So that's a big concern. And then lastly, I'm just, you know, philosophically a bit opposed of relaxing the rules about moving EA too far away from the downtown core. In my thought, you know, when you create a development such as an EA development, you want those members to have access to all of the town's core amenities, and if we relax too, if we're too relaxed in terms of where those developments can be based, then it's possible that they'll be pushed to the periphery of the town and then therefore make it that much more difficult for the people that live there to access the downtown amenities. So we propose a no vote on Article One. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to express a decision on this article?
Board of Selectmen, it's Mike Giomo for the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports this article. This makes needed improvements to the zoning bylaw for the EA district. It adds a definition of affordable age-restricted housing that's tied to the state definition so that we're sure the units created under the bylaw will count as part of the town's inventory for 40B purposes, and it clarifies that you can do a development that's both affordable and age-restricted. And for all the reasons that the planning board also supported it unanimously, the Board of Selectmen does as well.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a debate on the motion? Please approach the microphone if you wish to be heard.
Addie Mae Weiss, is this on? Okay, I can't hear, sorry. Addie Mae Weiss with One Jackson Road. I am on planning board. I am also part of the Housing Partnership, and a lot of time was spent to create the housing production plan and think of strategies on how we could achieve adding affordable housing. Some of the discussions were talked about, also talked about small creative projects, and small creative projects wouldn't be possible, given our downtown infrastructure, possibly within the downtown. They might be on, it might be a small habitat for a humanity project that might need to be sharing a septic system. At the moment, we can't share septic systems, and EA zoning would allow us to do that. The, in general, having worked with the, been in the field, looking at that, a system that is monitored is better for Sherburne, rather than having a system, a water system and a waste system in a conventional system where there is no monitoring. So I understand the fears that something would be a state-monitored. State DEP already sets regulations. Our Board of Health does abide by state regulations, as well as looking out for Sherburne's regulations. So a system, a water system that is DEP-monitored is essentially what we have plus, more. So it's, I think it's a, something that is a benefit for Sherburne.
Sean Goldstein of Three Surrey Lane. I have a question for the, for the planning board and the proponents of Article One. On the surface, it sounds like a good idea. I don't understand the controversy, but I guess my question is, and as I understand, that it's linked with Article Two, that you need to pass Article One for Article Two to be valid. Have I got that right? Okay, thank you, Marion. So if it's such a great idea, why haven't we done it years ago? Why did we wait until now to link it with this deal with press development? Thank you.
As I, as I mentioned, we've been discussing this for some time, and this isn't the only... There are other revisions and improvements to the zoning bylaw that the planning board has been discussing. This is one of them. This is not something new that just came up with Article Two. But since it's relevant to Article Two, and we want the town to have a chance to make a decision on the project in Article Two, we brought it forth now.
Mark Senet, 75, Russell Hill Road. So Article One and Two are contingent. Here's my concern: if you own a $600,000 house in Sherburne and you own the same in Dover, the taxes in the same school system, Dover, Sherburne, in Dover are significantly less, I believe, maybe as much as 40%. So I believe, I'm in the real estate business, not buying and selling, but understanding real estate markets, I believe that the tax rate in the town of Sherburne is out of control. I think it's hurting property values. So I need to understand, you know, the list here says this does this, and this is for the tax base. I think it's better to take One and Two together. I need to understand, someone, if someone could tell me, if you do One and Two together, will that lower the tax base? Will that, I'm sorry, increase the tax base and lower tax rates? If One and Two are passed together, is that what it's going to do? Can someone answer that?
I think that's probably best answered, that's probably best answered after we've heard the totality of Article Two, because that's the one that really affects the tax rate. Article One is simply a change in the zoning bylaw that has the purposes that I mentioned, and for legal reasons, it has to be done separately from Article Two. It's a change in the zoning bylaw. It applies to all developments going forward in town, not just the one that we're considering in Article Two.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
George Morgan, 41 Bear Hill Road, Sherburne. Just three points. A little over three years ago, we had a similar issue with a change of zoning from two-acre to EA. This occurred during the town meeting, as occurs in the spring, and there was more time than is available to us here then to actually go through the whole ramifications of just what this zoning change might do. It involved a location just at the one-mile limit from the center of town, and it was not a location that was very favorable to the ability of the elderly to get about and to enjoy the town center. So I'm not convinced that having EA locations just anywhere in town is necessarily beneficial to the elderly. I speak from some experience with my wife, who has been involved in elderly care for the better part of 30 years. The other, one other thing that comes to mind here is that this article also proposes a shared water system, and there are implications to doing that. Once you have it, what is to prevent any other developer from actually, if it need to be suing the town, to have access to that same system? And at whose cost? Will this be the taxpayers who pay to have these lines put in, or what? At this point in time, we need to have more time to review the pros and cons of this as it has been developed to this point. We certainly have a broad base of differing opinion on this now, which I think requires greater thought than we can give it to, give to it tonight, and that this could be better revisited in the regular town meeting come the spring. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to answer, I'd like to answer part of that. The waters, the shared water system and sewage treatment plant automatically are required for developments over a certain size, over a certain water need and bedroom count. So that's something that will happen if you are planning a development that's large enough to warrant it. That's a state decision, not our decision. And as far as, George, you asked several questions. One of your points was that it hasn't been sufficiently debated. We've had, I can't tell you how many open planning board meetings on this subject, and many people have come, and it's been extremely useful to us, to everyone's opinion. So I understand there are people here that haven't been able to attend those meetings, but just so you know, it's, we're not springing it on anyone. We've tried very hard to get wide and broad discussion.
The woman at the rear mic?
Hi, I'm Lorelei Randa. I live at Cider Hill. I just have a quick question. It's been presented that EA would provide an alternative to 40B for developers. Is it safe to say that it is, it satisfies the state requirements as an alternative to 40B, or it just provides the developer with an alternative? So I think, I love the alternative, but, you know.
Right.
Does it satisfy the state's requirements?
The 10% that's included in the third option, EA, does satisfy the state requirements, as long as we go through all of the hoops that the state requires, and of course, we would do that.
Thank you. Thanks.
At the front mic, please.
Yes. Grace Shepherd, Abbey Road. I think we need a little bit of history here. A few years back, the town was very upset because we were suddenly beset by quite a few 40Bs, and we realized we were very, very vulnerable, both because we had a certain amount of open space now that was relatively cheap compared to all the surrounding towns, and because we have a lot of estates that could potentially be developed. We decided we would try to gain, regain, control of our housing future. We appointed a Housing Partnership Committee. They very, very rapidly and successfully produced a housing production plan, which went to the state, and we turned and we looked at what was confronting us. In that process, we had two projects sitting on Coolidge Street in varying degrees of 40B-ness, and we tried to see if we could make it better. We incorporated some past ideas about EA into the revisions of the bylaw, because it was a kind of ammunition to say to a developer, "We don't care for that project. We think it would not be good for us. Can we get you to do this kind of a project?" That was one sort of thing that we did. The other thing is that we looked at rental and said, "That might also be a thing that will be good for us."
Thank you, Grace.
"And I will stop."
Thank you, Grace. Rear microphone?
Suzie Wheelwright, 137 Hunting Lane. I have a question and a couple of comments. Why, with the proposed affordable age-restricted designation, do we not require 25% of the units be affordable, which would match the requirement with 40B developments? Do you want to answer that, and then can I go ahead and make my comments after?
Yes, if the timer's here. Yes, if the timer's here. I'm just telling them to shut off the...
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, okay, great. Yes, why 10% and not 25%? The idea there is that if we require 25% and require the developer to go through all of the environmental and other regulatory parameters that the town requires, that makes 40B an easier option for them, because with 40B, it's under state rules. The state is absolutely for affordable housing. They don't stop these projects, and they will preferably, we're speculating, they would preferably go for a 40B with the state, because that way they don't have to comply with the town's stricter environmental standards.
Okay, Suzie.
Okay. Thank you, Marion. I did go to a number of the planning board meetings, and I, I heard what the developer had to say about a lot of things like school-age children, traffic, tax revenue. What I didn't hear was any challenging of that, and while the first planning board meeting on this project, which only occurred, I believe, in the early fall sometime, or maybe even a little later than that, had a good attendance, after that, the attendance fell right off. So I don't think people do have, have the information that they need to make an intelligent decision on this. The last planning board meeting that I went to, which was not the one last night, but the one before that, I think, you know, there were three of us in the room, and no one asked any questions. I didn't hear the planning board pressing the developer. I heard them, you know, accepting his numbers. Now, if, I'm not sure that that's a good way for us to go forward and retain control, and I would suggest that we, it does not subject... And I would suggest that we, it does not subject support Goal One of the Housing Protection Plan, which I had listed, but I can't find the exact wording. And I would urge you to vote no on this because I don't think if we give town water to this production, this development, that we will gain control. I think we will lose it to legalities.
Thank you, Suzie.
Addie Mae Wayes, one Jackson. I just wanted to clarify, is it working? Oh, is it turned off? It's on. Okay, sorry, guys. I wanted to clarify a couple of things, if I can remember all the points. The first one being Article One is kind of standalone in that Article One is just, it's what's in our zoning handbook, and it's our rules for all developments. So you can vote, you can choose to support Article One and not choose to support Article Two when we get to that discussion. And we will...
There is a discrepancy in the vote. We think more ballots, several more ballots have been cast than people have checked in. So we think the problem is possibly that some people may have put a yes and a no ballot in there. We don't know. However, we are going to go to a hand count now. So you have a hand. Please, please. You have a card there that is, what color?
Pink.
Pink. You have a pink card. And I will call the vote. And I just want to make sure that the people in the cafeteria are hearing me and that there are tellers in there to count those hand votes there as well. Okay. Okay, we need to wait. If the tellers will notify me, the head teller will notify me when the ballots have been all counted so that I can, so people can put their hands down. Tired. Have the tellers finished counting? They're checking the cafeteria. Can these people put their cards down? Only in this room. Only in the auditorium. Okay. Second half of the vote is all opposed. Please raise your cards. Again, I ask everyone to remain seated during the voting. People in the auditorium can put their cards down now. Thank you. This is the auditorium. Yeah. Still counting in the cafeteria. Thanks. People in the cafeteria can put down their cards now. All right, we have the vote counted. The vote is 376 aye, 74 nay. Motion passes by two-thirds. Article Two. Article Two. Rezone and accept preliminary development plan for number 104 Coolidge Street. Do you have a motion? Ms. Relles?
I am at the town vote to grant preliminary development plan approval pursuant to Section 5.6.3 zoning by law to permit the development of nearly 100% of the land at 84 Coolidge Street that is the subject of the preliminary development plan as shown on a plan on file by the town clerk entitled Proposed EA Zone Metropolites, Coolidge Street Children dated November 20, 2017, as supplemented by a legislative date November 21, 2017, presented at town meeting or any amendments to the plan approved at town meeting. And to rezone to residents EA is with the land at 104 Coolidge Street and a portion of the land at 84 Coolidge Street that is the subject of the preliminary development plan as shown on a plan on file by the town clerk entitled Proposed EA Zone Metropolites, Coolidge Street Children dated November 20, 2017, and to amend the zoning map established under Article Nine of the zoning by law according to...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have the presentation by the proponents of the article. Mr. Higley.
John Higley, Planning Board. It's not on? It's on. John Higley, Planning Board. The Planning Board refers the description of the preliminary development plan to the developer.
He said... Excuse me for a minute. John, you have made a designation for someone to speak for the Planning Board.
TRAS would like to thank the Planning Board, the Sherburne Housing Partnership, and the Board of Selectmen for working with us over the last eight months to help shape this proposal and address the concerns of our neighbors, town boards, and residents, and also for allowing us to present our proposed EA zoning override request to you today. The parcel under consideration for EA zoning override vote is known as Metropolites. It is a proposed 67-unit each restricted 55-plus in age development on 22 acre parcel at 104 Coolidge Street.
Excuse me.
Currently on this parcel, TRAS has filed for PD8 unit for sale 40B project with all three...
Excuse me. Can you pause the video? I've been informed that since Mr. Stevens is speaking on the video and he is not a town resident, the body will have to give permission for Mr... town resident, the body will have to give permission for Mr... Is there any objection?
Yes.
Alright, let me take a vote. All in favor of allowing Mr. Stevens to speak through the video? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, go ahead and pass.
TRAS would like to thank the Planning Board, the Sherburne Housing Partnership, and the Board of Selectmen for working with us over the last eight months to help shape this proposal and address the concerns of our neighbors, town boards, and residents, and also for allowing us to present our proposed EA zoning override request to you today. The parcel under consideration for EA zoning override vote is known as Metta Brook Commons. It is a proposed 67-unit each restricted 55-plus in age development on 22-acre parcel at 104 Coolidge Street. Currently on this parcel, TRAS has filed an 88-unit for sale 40B project with all three bedroom units. It is currently under appeal for approval at Housing Appeals Court. The parcel is in the northwest corner of Sherburne and is directly across from Sweet Meadow Farm. It is approximately one mile from Roach Brothers &amp; Walgreens at Route 135 in Natick and 1.5 miles from the West Natick train station. The property abuts the Sudbury Aqueduct and the Natick Golf Course. Parcel also abuts 15 acres at 84 Coolidge Street where TRAS has currently filed a 40B rental project referred to as The Villages at Sherburne. All 67 de-restricted units will be new construction. 60 other units will be sold at market rate and seven will be designated as affordable units with one bedroom and will either be handicap accessible or adaptable. All 60 market rate units will have first-floor master bedrooms and will average around 2,000 square feet in living space. The development will be accessed primarily by Coolidge Street with emergency access off of Gray Road. 50% of the total land area will be made as buffer zones or open space as shown in green and crosshairs screen on the plan. The roadway and infrastructure system will remain private with all snow removal, repairs, maintenance, and landscaping to be owned and paid for by the residents. All units are a minimum of 60 feet away from property lines and 200 to 400 feet away from most existing homes on Coolidge, Metta Brook, and Rockwood. The units will be of Cape Cod or small farmhouse style with lower roof lines, and all units will be Energy Star rated with high-efficiency gas heating and two-stage cooling. The proposed unit density is three units per acre, which is under the EA zoning requirement of no more than four units per acre. No waivers other than the one-mile rule previously discussed are needed for this project. It conforms to all other EA zoning bylaw conditions. As mentioned before, Metta Brook Commons shares some infrastructure with TRAS' proposed 40B rental project, The Villages at Sherburne. The Villages at Sherburne is an 88-unit 40B rental development, of which 100% of the units will count to the Sherburne Affordable Housing Stock and will immediately grant the town safe harbor from other 40B projects upon permitting. The application consists of 56 one-bedroom units, 23 two-bedroom units, and 9 three-bedroom units. It is anticipated to generate no more than 19 school-aged children or 1.4 students per grade. Both projects will share a state-permitted wastewater treatment facility and a state-permitted public water supply. There remains an option for public water from Natick, but this is not required for the site. Assuming a positive vote this evening, we will bring both projects into the Planning Board and the Zoning Board in the spring for plan approval of both projects. Both projects have been detailed out through a collaborative effort with the developer, the Planning Board, and the Sherburne Housing Partnership as a way to meet Sherburne's needs for rental and affordable housing options, to lessen the potential of future 40B impacts on the town, to reach safe harbor status in regards to 40B applications, to create diversified housing options not currently available in the town, to help aging residents stay, and to generate tax revenue with minimal impact on school costs. Under current market conditions, Metta Brook Commons is expected to generate a taxable real estate base of $40 million. The Villages rental would create an additional $20 million in taxable base, adding $60 million in taxable real estate, or over $1.1 million in new annual tax revenue to the town of We are asking you, the Sherburne public, to vote yes to an EA rezone of the Metta Brook Commons parcel. A yes vote for EA zoning means both the rental and the 55-plus project will proceed to the next level of permitting at the Planning Board and the Zoning Board. This means Sherburne could reach safe harbor for future 40B developments, along with up to an additional $1.1 million in new tax revenue with minimal school-aged children impact. A no vote for EA zoning will deny the elderly housing portion of the project, and a three-bedroom for-sale 40B project would move forward in Housing Appeals Court and once developed would increase the number of school-aged children in the town of Sherburne by 106 students. Thank you.
We have a presentation now in opposition to the article, and that would be Mr. McStrawick again. Thank you.
No music for me, sorry. I, uh...
You've got to move.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we need, uh...
Yep, go down.
Go back, and then I'll give it to you. So I think when we created these slides a few weeks ago, or, sorry, a few days ago, there was still a lot of misconception out there. I think some of that has been cleared up by the healthy debate that we've seen on Nextdoor Sherburne, and I applaud everyone for how civil those conversations have been because I think that's really, uh, says a lot about our character as a town. We're advocating that we should say no on this development because we believe, though, that there is still some misconception, and if you could go to the next slide. What's really important that everyone understands is that a yes to Article Two is not just a vote to convert the 104 Coolidge project into a 67-unit EA project. It, in fact, also agrees to move forward with the 40B project at 84 Coolidge, and we find, we believe, the combined impact of both the EA development project as well as the 40B project at 84 Coolidge is too much, would put too much strain candidly on the infrastructure that we have to support that system. Go ahead. And it has been made clear in the documentation provided by the board that a vote for yes is, in fact, a vote for both projects. I know that we're not debating the merits of a 40B project today at 84 Coolidge, but there's a direct linkage between those two projects. A yes vote today means you agree to a 40B project being developed at 84 Coolidge. Uh, next slide, please. In addition, so there's a number of items here that I'll go over quickly just to make sure that we address. We're concerned, obviously, with, if any of you have driven down Coolidge on a weekday afternoon or evening, you know how backed up it gets around Prospect. It's going to be significant, the impact that these added homes will have to the traffic on Coolidge Street. Philosophically, candidly, and this is probably my largest concern, our largest concern, is, you know, when you think about what the goal of a 40B project ought to be, right? It's about integrating new families into the town of Sherburne. And I question how successful it will be if we put all of those 40B families in one location on the periphery of town. You know, I think ideally what you're looking for is a situation where they are scattered across the town so that they are embraced by all of the community as opposed to being, existing in one or two developments that are essentially linked. Also, you know, it's important that we understand that there's been some question about the pricing of these homes, where they're priced currently as a downsizing alternative. Most of them are actually for sale at prices that exceed the homes today on Meadow Brook Road that have an acre and have four to five bedrooms. We also are concerned that there's been too much confusion with regards to the actual impact that both of these units will have on school-aged children. TRAS will say it's 19. We've seen quotes online as high as 106. There's six or seven different studies that are being cited to support those numbers. So I think we need to get smart on actually what the impacts will be to the school. And then the last point I just would like to make is this argument about safe harbor. Safe harbor is something we'll get to eventually, but there's still a permitting process, and if we vote yes tonight, we haven't immediately achieved safe harbor. Until the permitting is done, other 40B applications can be submitted, and those can be seen through as well. So it's not exactly accurate to say that we achieved safe harbor today with a yes vote. And then lastly, just my final bullet point is that, you know, there's going to be another census done in 2020, and that will, you know, reset all the numbers that the 40B regulations are tied to. So even if we do reach our 40B quota today, all on Coolidge, it's quite possible that we'll need additional developments when the census is done in 2020. Thanks very much.
Peter, could you just repeat your address again?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's 21 Meadow Brook Road in Sherburne.
Thank you very much. Okay, we now have a required report from the Planning Board on this article. Mr. Higley?
John Higley, 14 Saddlebrook Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. Oops, not yet. John Higley, 14 Saddlebrook Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board reports the proponent presented sufficient data in the preliminary development plan to give reasonable assurance that the development will conform with, to the preliminary development plan. The Planning Board also reports we voted unanimously to recommend the town vote in favor of Article Two. Let me explain why. Mass General Law 40B gives developers incentives to build affordable housing. It also gives towns incentive to add affordable housing. We have an approved housing production plan, and when we meet the state criteria to certify our plan, 40B laws allow our zoning board to deny future undesirable 40B development that's inconsistent with that plan. Sherburne's plan encourages affordable housing that adds to our financial health, protects our environment, open space, and town character. There are two 88-unit 40B proposals on Coolidge Street. Neither have to adhere to our rules or process. Because we haven't reached 10% yet and don't have a certified plan, Article Two instead asks the town to accept a negotiated alternative to, an alternative to an undesirable 40B to rezone, and we ask the town to rezone 104 Coolidge Street and approve a preliminary development plan. Coolidge Crossing, as a 40B, adds 88 three-bedroom housing units, a large number of students, and creates a burden on our schools and town finances. The Villages of Sherburne, the apartment, is also a 40B, but it is a rental development with one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, a lot less impact on our educational expense, disturbs less land, has half the bedrooms, and although 25% of the apartments are affordable, the state gives incentives for apartments and will count all 88 towards our 10% affordable housing goal. But we don't get to vote on either of these. We don't get to vote on 40B developments because the permitting is all done through, by the ZPA and held to state laws, and they don't get to come here to a town meeting for us to deliberate. We can't vote on 40Bs, but Article Two is, in the Planning Board's opinion, a much better alternative that adds affordable housing using our town regulations. It's better for Sherburne, keeps us on a realistic, feasible plan to add both housing and provide long-term protection for Sherburne. Coolidge Crossing on the left here is the 40B project. Article Two is a chance to switch this particular 40B project at 104 Coolidge Street to a Sherburne EA project with a particular preliminary development plan. Metta Brook Commons is all age restricted, including the affordable, handicap-accessible rental apartments more available to Sherburne residents. It protects 25% open space, forecasts no burden on schools, and is financially much better. Because it uses less water and waste treatment capacity, it simplifies those utilities, and in return, Article Two, if Article Two passes, the developer has added agreements in the preliminary development plan that benefit of butters in the town, including well protection, trails, eliminates construction traffic on Meadow Brook, and the developer also has agreed, if Article Two passes, to not submit new 40Bs until we're in safe harbor. Sherburne is 91 affordable units away from this 10% goal, assuming the pending projects get built. Adding seven at Meadow Brook and 88 at The Villages will reach 10%. The sooner we get to safe harbor and to 10%, the better. There's no option to vote to prevent development at 104 Coolidge Street. Development's going to happen. A no vote means we risk bigger, costlier development, not controlled by our regulations. When a zoning board in Massachusetts denies a 40B, the state sides with the developer 90 to 95% of the time. We've never stopped a 40B. We've spent a lot of time and money, made one smaller and one bigger. If we vote yes, the proposal will be developed with Sherburne rules, including peer reviews of hydrogeology, market demand, and traffic as part of the EA final development process. It'll add affordable housing and enable us to achieve 10% of housing goal and control development. A preliminary development plan is the result of negotiation to find an alternative to an undesirable 40B. A lot of input, questions, and concerns have influenced the plan and the developer's letter in a real positive way. With a yes vote, after a preliminary development plan is approved, a lot more engineering and study has to be done before a final plan can be approved and permitted, and a final plan can be denied if any of those details don't conform to the preliminary development plan or our rules and regulations. The final plan can be smaller than the plan we approved tonight, but it cannot be made bigger. Voting yes gives the town much more control, and for all these reasons, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend a yes vote for Article Two.
Thank you, John. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to express an opinion on this article? If we could have someone raise the screen... Uh, you don't have any, oh, yeah, okay.
Mike Chaimo for the, hello? Yeah. Mike Chaimo for the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports this article, as does the Planning Board and the Advisory Committee. We believe it's in the town's best interest to work with the developer of this parcel to create a project that Sherburne needs and that will provide a significant positive tax benefit and minimal impacts on the town as a whole. We do understand that not all residents want more development or think that this development is in the town's interest. As a board, we have a different view. Sherburne does not exist in isolation. It is subject to the state Affordable Housing Law and market pressures. It's very exposed to the potential for development of a type, size, and at locations that would be much less in keeping with Sherburne's character and its needs. It's wishful thinking that we can have a strategy of deflecting all proposed developments in the hope that something better or smaller will eventually come along. The town has spent significant money fighting different 40B developments. We spent over a quarter of a million dollars fighting the Whitney Farms development between 2000 and 2010. We ended up with the state approving more units than the developer originally asked for. This is a good project, and this is something that the town can support, and that will be beneficial to the town, so we urge you to vote yes.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a debate on the article? If there is, please approach the microphones. Why don't you use the microphone one up there? Thank you.
John Hargrave, 49 Rockwood Street. We are the single largest of butters to this project, and what we're supposed to do tonight is say no. We even have an acronym for this, NIMBY, Not In My Backyard. This is literally in our backyard, but tonight we are going to vote yes. We're going to change the course of history in Sherburne, and the reason is we are citizens of a community and we're citizens of a town. What did your predecessors say for the common goodwill of the people of Sherburne? That's what we're doing. We answer to a higher power. This project solves a lot of problems, gets us to safe harbor for 40B, and we're voting yes for the good of Sherburne. To be sure, we have additional problems. To be sure, we have additional problems. We have concerns. We're very concerned about the water quality for our neighbors. We're concerned about privacy. We're concerned about our roadways. But we're saying yes in good faith that the Board of Selectmen is going to step up and help us find solutions to those, and that the developer is going to work with us to find solutions that work for everyone. So we're voting yes tonight for the good of Sherburne. Thanks.
Rear microphone?
Yes, hi. Neil Kessler, 43 Page Farm Road. I just wanted to say I've put a lot of effort into studying this project and just in doing work for the town. And the first thing I'd like to say is just that, for folks that are looking at Next Door Sherburne, you can see there's a lot of healthy debate about what some of the parameters, what some of the goods are, what some of the bad. But, for example, these things are, the things that were talked about in the planning board's report are not necessarily factual. The present wastewater capacity for both sites is 26,000 gallons, and that would actually only allow you to build across both sites 78 three-bedroom units. So the portrayal of the alternative of voting no is, I think, more dire than is actually represented by the facts. There's a lot of those other things that have been debated. I'm not going to talk about that tonight. But I think the one thing I wanted to say was, I personally have gone back and forth a number of times on whether or not to support the project. But somebody pointed out the general chemical, the discussion that's from, I think it's TRC is our consultant, that was filed last week, and they're talking about general chemical and some really mobile, persistent, and highly toxic substances that have already been found in wells on Meadowbrook. Given the uncertainty of getting water from Natick or anywhere else, or whether, if the water's going to come out of the ground there, it's just a big uncertainty. And what it said to me was that there's just a pile of uncertainties here. We've rushed a town meeting to pass this with some urgency I don't think is necessary. And I think with all these sort of uncertainties, it piles up in my mind to something that's a no vote now. It doesn't mean I wouldn't support a project that's bigger, that has all this affordable housing. I'm on the Housing Partnership Committee. I want that. But I think with all these unanswered questions for us to rush into it before we study these things, for me, I just can't in good conscience support a project that I have no idea what's going to happen with. And so I would just urge a no vote on Article 2 tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Rear microphone?
Thanks. Sean Goldstein, still at 3:30. A gentleman earlier asked, what are the financials on it? And I think it's probably, given our town's finances, given our tax rate, probably something we'd like a straight answer on. And so I thought I'd just very quickly try to walk through it. The developer said that the revenues to the town would be 1.1 million. Let's take them at their word. What about the costs? Costs come from two sources. They come from the services, and then they come from the students. They've told us that there would be about 120 students between the two. At $16,000 a year, that's almost $2 million that we would spend?
No. No.
Okay. Talk to me. Tell me how I'm wrong.
No.
No, 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 no. Both, both.
Excuse me. Please, address, this is not a back and forth.
Okay, let me clarify. We're talking about both developments. I know you saw a sign that said there'd be no kids because apparently someone believes that it's impossible for a man to impregnate someone over the age of 36. It's actually, and I'm living proof, it's possible people over 55 can have school-aged children. People over 55 will have school-aged children. And in addition, all the folks here who are empty nesters, who are thinking about moving there, when they do, people are going to move into their homes. And what are they going to bring? They're going to bring the same thing we all brought, children. Okay? So if you just take the developer's numbers of 120 new students between the two of them, it's about $2 million in additional costs. The other costs are from services. We're adding 10% more houses. We spend about $10 million a year. Reasonable person would say another million for that. Let's say we perform budgetary miracles and cut it in half. So you're looking at 2.5 million in costs. These are very conservative numbers. My numbers are $4 million. You can see them on Next Door. And the revenue is still 1.1 million. So you might be asking yourself, where does that million and a half to 3 million come from? I think you know the answer.
Thank you. Rear microphone?
Well, Joanne Candelas, 6 Meadowbrook Road in Sherburne. Just to be a little bit more of what he said, think about it. 88 apartments, and most of them are two-bedroom. They say 1, 2, 3, but most of them are two-bedroom. And think about how many people, do you think in 88 apartments, people aren't going to come with their kids to Sherburne to go to the Sherburne schools? It's not going to be 19. I don't know where he got that. And another thing that was said before, that the Housing Partners unanimously voted yes, well, I was under the assumption that two people of the five voted no. So, that's what I wanted.
Thank you. If someone, just a minute, if someone is going to speak as a citizen at the front mic, I'll take someone from the front mic now, but... As far as, to limit the length of this, I would ask the planning board to answer questions that people have, but not to dispute necessarily what people say, unless you're disputing as a citizen. Thanks. If you want to do that, that's fine. Okay? Rear, rear mic. No one went up there, so...
Karen Lane, 15 Meadowbrook Road, Sherburne. I've been a resident of Sherburne for 30 years, my husband and I. We had two children go through the Dover Sherburne schools, starting at Pine Hill, and then to DS. And I want to say three things. I am not necessarily against the EA portion of this, but I feel that if we vote down the EA, we will have more negotiating power with the developer, who is planning to sell $48 million of units in the EA project. And if we vote this down, he makes more money on the EA, but then we can work with him to, on negotiating what will meet the needs of the residents on Coolidge, Meadowbrook, Rockland, Prospect, and this entire town. It was brought up by Neil last night at the planning board meeting, that one of the things that he recommends is that we should drop the appeal at the fields. And if we drop the appeal at the fields, we are going to be closer to meeting safe harbor and not be so concerned about the safe harbor on Coolidge Street, where we're going to be adding 155 units. Now, we all know that the federal tax legislation right now, the House and the Senate agreed on one issue, and that is that we will only be able to deduct $10,000 of our property taxes. And everybody in this room has more than $10,000 in property taxes. I, as a 55-older adult, cannot move into a $700,000 unit over at whatever he calls it, because the name changes daily, and pay...
Please finish up.
Pay the price, and pay the property taxes, and pay the HOF fee. Those units will not sell, just like Whitney Farms sold.
Thank you.
The developer's numbers are not in line.
Thank you. Someone else? So Addie, do you want to speak as a citizen?
May I add to your specific comment?
Yes, but please use the citizen's mic there. Thanks.
I am going, this is Addie Mae Weiss at 1 Jackson Road. I will ask the developer to speak regarding the question of septic. But first, I wanted to say, it never came up in planning board, the idea of dropping the appeal at the fields, that ship sailed a long time ago, that's not an option on the table. But I would like the developer to just answer the question on a septic capacity.
I assume that's all right, for the developer to answer that question with people. Thanks.
Sure. Ben Stevens from Truss Development. We actually, on the septic capacity, we filed with the state, the permit's been in about six or nine months, for a minimum of 35,000 gallons. There's multiple areas on the site. We probably could do somewhere between 75,000 and 100,000 gallons on that site, but then you'd be taking up a certain amount of area. Where the system has done its six months of groundwater mounting analysis, we determined we have 26,000 gallons. So that's where the 26,000 gallons number is coming from. But there's, you can split the system up. You can put half on one piece, half on another piece, under a wastewater treatment permit. So there's plenty of capacity.
Thank you. Michael?
Michael Lee, 28 Wildwood Drive. I'm working on my sixth budget as a regional school committee member, and this is going to be an extremely challenging budget year for us. I want to be very clear for people who are in this room, that what we're looking at now is an opportunity to bring very much-needed revenue to the town through an elderly and affordable project of 66 units or 67 units. There's no documentation out there that show that these types of projects attract any number of kids. At the apartment building, my best estimates based upon the data provided by Natick for recent apartment complexes completed there are in the range of 6 to 13 students. So 20, or 19 or 20 that the developer presented, I think, is a fair number. However, if we vote this down and the developer proceeds with the existing filed 40B at 104 Coolidge, we could see 40, 60, 80, 100, who knows how many students in those three-bedroom townhouses. And that will severely impact both Pine Hill and the region. It will further stress our town's budget. I can only assure you, from having spent so much time on financial issues with this town and on the school budgets, that voting tonight yes is a much better situation for our children, for elderly people in this town who want to downsize but stay in Sherburne. It provides them options, and it will lower taxes in the long run for all members of the town. So I just assure you that this is a much superior choice than to come up with some undefined alternative, other than, quote, negotiate. And as we've learned, developers don't have to negotiate under 40B laws. That's the state.
Thank you, Michael. Marian?
Right. I want to just emphasize something that was, has been mentioned very briefly, but it's extremely important. That is that this project obviously will take a little time to get permitted, any project does. But by working quickly, we should be able to get there within a few months. And if it's, if we vote no, and the 40B projects go ahead, obviously, I should say, the rental project will get us very quickly to 10%, along with the seven units of affordable housing. And once we're there, we are, we can't stop the 40Bs that are already in the system, but we can stop future 40Bs on other properties in town. And the map that John showed briefly shows that there are over 20 properties in town that are not protected, that are over 20 acres. There are at least that many properties of 10 acres or more that have no protection. And so if we delay and try to do small projects or figure out another way, we're going to end up with more properties developed than we're ready to accept, I think, at this point. And we won't be able to stop them, because we won't have reached 10%.
Thank you, Marian. Rear microphone there?
Hi, Jennifer Burton, 14 Coolidge Street. As a neighbor within one mile of these proposed projects, I'm very concerned about my water. And I have a question. I'd like to know if any provisions have been made or will be made for current homeowners' well water? So if my well runs dry, is it my responsibility?
Would someone address that? John?
Sean Higley, Saddle Brook Road, Planning Board. The three butters closest to the proposed well site have an agreement, have an offer, if EA passes, the developers agree to provide them a public water supply source if they allow their wells to be monitored, see if there's any influence. Beyond that, they said, and this is part of the agreement now, it's in a letter that goes with the preliminary development plan, that says, and for a period of three years after full occupancy, so when you have the maximum demand for three years, if there's any influence in their wells, they'll be allowed to connect to the public water supply. So that protects the three butters that are the closest. With a public water supply, there's a zone one, in this case, it's something less than 400 feet. And other butters are 1,000 feet or 2,000 feet and much further. So the area of influence, if there's any, if there's, if there's influence, we'll see it during the pump-down test. The other thing is, during the final development planning process, we get to hire a peer review of our choice to look at the hydrogeology of the area. And if it's not, if it's not acceptable, if it's putting homeowners at risk, or if it's doing anything negative, our peer review of the hydrogeological study allows us to deny the final permit. So that's part of the permitting process. If we vote for an EA process, we get to do all that. So the final development plan gives us tremendous power to look at this further and refine it. And if there's problems like with the water supply, if it's not feasible, developer doesn't want to build it anyway, but we have that authority to deny a final permit. If the site's not capable, if it doesn't meet our rules and regulations, has to go through the permitting of Board of Health and Conservation, all of that has to happen before a final development plan can be approved or permitted.
So the answer is no then? That if my well runs dry, I'm on my own?
No, it's not at all.
But that's not what, you didn't say anything about provisions in there for current homeowners.
The three closest butters have this agreement, and we have a hydrogeological study to look at, to look at...
Well, you can have studies, but you don't know what's actually going to happen until the project is built.
Okay, I think we'll call the debate there. I'm not calling the debate, but call that question. Mark?
Mark Brown, 33 Green Lane. I think it's inevitable that we're going to have some kind of very good-sized project, unusually sized project, at these locations. It'll be precedent setting for the town. But at the 7th November planning board meeting, Mr. Stevens was asked what he would do if the Article 2 were voted down. And he said that he would like to work with a committee of townspeople to downsize both the EA project and the rental project. And some numbers that he quoted were, or suggested, were an EA project of around 62-bedroom units and a rental project with 50 units or so, but the bedroom's not specified. And I just believe that a combined project with 110 units is a better fit for our community than a 155-unit project.
Thank you, Mark. Rear mic? George?
Hi, George Morgan, 41 Bear Hill Road. I just have, so three questions here. There's a lot of good argument for the EA over the 40B, but question one is, what protection do we have as a community against the developer at his option, changing the EA to a 40B? We know this has been done in the past in neighboring communities. And however much the EA may seem to be a workable thing, if the developer decides this is not a workable thing, then suddenly we're back to 40Bs. Second question is, where is the water coming from? Is it coming out of Sherburne's groundwater? Or is it coming from someplace else? The impression I'm getting here is that we're sort of assuming that Sherburne has this virtually limitless supply of water to provide for this location, and we don't know that going in. And thirdly, we have, talk of a rental project here, who is going to be the landlord? Is the, the town itself is a landlord to one of the 40Bs in town, and has not, over the years, been overly happy with the rather limited numbers of units there. Is the town prepared to take on the responsibility of administering an 88-unit rental complex?
Front mic? Were those rhetorical questions, George, or are those...
No, those are real questions.
Okay. Just try to move along quickly, John, if you can.
What, what protection do we have that the developer won't change the project to a 40B? One is, if he wanted to do that, he wouldn't be here now. It's already a 40B. And we negotiated to come up with a plan to make it, to persuade the developer, instead of a 40B, to do this EA project because it's... instead of a forty-B, to do this EA project because it's smaller, uses less groundwater, there's a lot of things that's to our advantage. So if the developer wanted to change it back to a forty-B, they'd have to unwind all this and then go back and apply, it would take several years. So there's a lot of pain to do that. The developer is willing to do this preliminary development plan instead, it's a win-win. I know, I was asked about Dover as fortyBs, those are, those are fortyBs to begin with as an example. So it's not, it's not done as a routine in those, where's the water coming from? It's coming from the ground and it gets recharged into the same area. In terms of the rental, who's the landlord? It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a rental process, it's a project that's owned by the company that owns it. Right now, Trask would own it. If they, if they decided to sell it sometime in the future, then it would be owned by whoever owns that building. It's not the town. The town does not, the town has no ownership and no responsibility to act as a landlord or be, we're not, we have nothing to do with it. So, so that's, that shouldn't be a concern at all.
Thank you, John.
Hi, Jean Widdemeyer, 25 Meadowbrook Road. Got it. Jean Widdemeyer, 25 Meadowbrook Road. I would like to kind of just step back and take a bigger view of this. And I think the bigger view is, is from this Housing Production Plan. It's about, I think, fifty pages long. A lot of effort and work went into it. And I'd just like to read the summary of goals from that and just measure where we are. This was from June 1, 2017, six months ago. We set these goals as a town. And are we measuring the vote tonight against these goals? Are we achieving our goals that we have so carefully put down? So Goal One is to actively manage and guide development of affordable homes in Sherburne. The numerical goal, strive to create an average of seven homes annually that count on a subsidized housing inventory towards the state's ten percent goal for forty-B over the next five years. At this rate, Sherburne will achieve the ten percent goal by 2034. I would just like to comment that the proposal is ninety-five affordable units, which is, I believe, eighty-eight units in excess of our agreed goal of what the town commitment is. The second goal of the Housing Production Plan is to increase appropriately scaled housing options. Appropriately scaled is not defined here, but I just think that a hundred and fifty-five units, that's ten and a half percent increase in the town in one year. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. My time's up. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that Neil at the rear mic?
Yes.
Okay, so you have already spoken on this...
I was only going to respond specifically.
So if you can wait till everyone else has spoken, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Carol Mitchell, 121 Coolidge Street. I think our end of town, our street and our neighbors are paying a big price for this, but I am still going to vote yes. And the reason I'm going to vote yes is I think both properties will be developed. I think we could have prevented this by years ago, being more aggressive about creating affordable housing, which I really believe in, but I think this will get us there much sooner. And then I would suggest that the town look to become landlords of another Woodhaven kind of place where we would be picking the number of rental units to add to the stock.
Thank you, Carol. Roger?
Roger Demler, Maple Street. I'd like to talk about the water issue somewhat. The town's current water quality requirements is that the well gets tested once. When it's new, it's never tested again. But how many people here have their water tested every month for bacteria? How many, how many people here get their water tested every month for bacteria and once a year for every chemical you could imagine? Lead, copper, magnesium, you know, the whole business. That's what's required if you put in a state-regulated public water supply. Another very important point about a public water supply, the state will review a pump-down test that goes on for five days and determine what the safe withdrawal rate is. It's not up to the builder what the safe rate is. And I'll admit, this site is a little dicey because he's going to have to put in several bedrock wells to make this happen, and the capacity may be limited, and therefore the amount of buildings he can put up will be limited as well. It's highly unlikely it could go the other way. Another point, the waste treatment plant will put water back in the ground that's cleaner than what came out of the well. It's potable water with, with all the bacteria taken out of it and everything else. And most of what comes out of the well will go back into the ground in the neighborhood. Another way to look at the testing requirements of the public water supply, it's kind of like having the giant canary in the coal mine in your neighborhood because they're going to be watching it monthly and in great detail. Every year, they'll know what the neighborhood water is. So I think that's a good deal to me.
Thank you, Roger.
Rick Novak, 36 Nation Hill Road. I'm the Chair of the ZBA, but I'm speaking solely as a private citizen. I hope you've all heard a lot of good things tonight. There's a lot of potential gains with this project. I hope you also heard that there's a lot of concern, regardless of how much groundwater is there. There is an extremely grave concern that there is a long-term, safe, clean supply of groundwater there, as TRC emphasized to the town using words like profound and dramatic last week. And maybe that can be worked out. But if it can't, that means a public water supply from somewhere else, and we ought to know what that costs, who pays for it, how it gets here, and where else it goes. In any normal rezoning, we would know that in advance. And why we can't know that tonight is, is beyond me. Apparently, we're told we can't ask that question because of the, otherwise, an eighty-eight unit project will be built as of right. Do not take my word for it. Town Council is right up there, and she can answer whether or not that unit can be built as of right, because the answer is it can't. Yes, something will be built there. It'll be bigger than eight units. Will it be eighty-eight units? Who knows? Is the town wise to negotiate and try to come up with a compromise plan? Of course. But why does it have to be yes or no? There's no reason for that. All we need to do is take no action. If this is a good plan today in December, it'll be a better plan with some candor in April at regular town meeting when everybody can vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Who's, Chuck or...
Chuck Yan, 116 Maple Street, Member of the Board of Selectmen. This is a very important vote for Sherburne, but I'm not going to repeat in detail the many reasons why it helps the town, both financially, local control, forty-B protections, open space, affordability, and housing diversity. You've read a lot of the arguments and read them, you've heard and read them all before. There are a lot of complex issues in this article, and for anyone who's unsure how to weigh and balance these issues, I urge you to remember that the Advisory Committee, the Planning Board, and the Board of Selectmen have all unanimously voted to support this article. These boards represent a broad and diverse cross-section of Sherburne residents and perspective. Each board has a different focus and mandate. The boards have devoted a great deal of time, research, and deliberation to understand these issues and to propose the best way forward. It's unusual to have the unanimous support of seventeen elected and appointed members. While this proposal's not perfect, it's a compromise, and as with any compromise, it's very easy to criticize and second-guess what has been negotiated. This is a very good project for the town. In my opinion, it's much better than the EA project proposed for Maple Street three years ago and the three forty-B projects in Sherburne that have already been approved by the Commonwealth and are currently under development. All of these boards and volunteers have carefully weighed and reviewed this project, and their unanimous support and approval confirms to me that this is a very good proposal that we should approve. As a community, it's also the right thing to do, to create more affordable and more diverse housing, and I urge you to vote yes on Article Two.
Thank you, Chuck. Rear microphone.
I'm Aaron Paddock. My family lives at 86 Coolidge Street, which abuts and is surrounded by both projects that Trask is planning, including 104 Coolidge Street, which is being voted on tonight, and 84 Coolidge Street, which has been submitted as a forty-B affordable housing project. While we understand the Planning Board's position in trying to achieve the ten percent threshold for affordable units, we have serious concerns about the impacts to our quality of life, the safety and well-being of our family, as well as the potential negative economic impacts to our largest investment, which is our property. If these two projects are approved, we'd go from having two neighbors to a hundred and fifty neighboring homes, maybe more. Furthermore, as proposed, the sewer treatment facility for the project is directly adjacent to our backyard, not only destroying our view, but having the potential to impact the integrity of our well. Our property would be surrounded by high-density development. This is not what we came to Sherburne for, and I don't think anybody in this town moved here to have a hundred and fifty homes next door to them. Sadly, we're collateral damage in Sherburne's inability to satisfy the requirement of the state's affordable housing law, and it's consumed most of our life for the past year with no clear end in sight. So after a lot of soul-searching, we've decided to actually vote yes for EA zoning at 104 Coolidge. We would much prefer that neither of these projects move forward, but given the tough decision we have, we think it's the best of two bad choices. Our hope is that 104 Coolidge project makes fiscal sense for the town and that the Coolidge prod, 84 Coolidge project helps the town get close to the ten percent threshold. Finally, we think that including our land in the 84 Coolidge project would make for a better project and actually get the town above the threshold and through the 20-30 census. In terms of our personal situation, it would help us resettle in a different Sherburne home, not be surrounded by a hundred and fifty units in the sewage treatment plan. We don't want to influence your decision, of course. You should vote what you think is best for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that that should be the end of the applause. Thank you. Peter?
Peter Liffenden, Dopping Brook Road. I rise to move the question.
Okay, so this is not debatable, and I will take a voice vote on this. And I would ask the Assistant Town Moderator to also take a voice vote in the cafeteria. And this is a vote to call the question, which all it does is limits debate. The debate is over at that point, and we will then move to a vote on the article. This is not a vote on the article. This is a vote to stop debate on the article. And it must be a two-thirds vote. So if it is possible, when there is a two-thirds vote, excuse me, I'm speaking. If it is possible, when there is a two-thirds vote, if we can get a unanimous vote, that is always preferable. But I will call the vote now, voice vote on this. All in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Two comments.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, that's why I'm saying nay.
We are. Okay, and Ani, would you take care of it in there? And the result in there was?
Aye.
By two-thirds. Yes, I, I will call the vote here also as two-thirds, and so the question has been called. So, yes, we're not going to the paper ballots this time. We're going, but because it is a two-thirds vote, and there may be, it may be closer than calling the question, I ask you to remain seated during the vote. All in favor of Article passing Article Two?
What does it mean?
I'm sorry. A, a vote of aye approves the rezoning of 104 Coolidge Street. It approves the, to an EA zone, and it approves the preliminary development plan that is on file in the town clerk's office that is referenced in the advisory report, and you may have that with you tonight, I don't know. So the, the question has been called.
I just have a point of order.
I'm sorry. No. Okay. So all in favor of an aye vote, which does those two things, it rezones the land and approves the preliminary development plan, please raise your cards now. I would remind all people to be seated during the vote. Please, people over here on my right, if you would please be seated during the vote while the vote is being counted. Not in the aisles. Please take a seat. The votes in the main auditorium have been counted, so you may put your cards down. The votes in the main auditorium have been counted, so you may put your cards down. The votes in the main auditorium have been counted, so you may put your cards down. The votes in the main auditorium have been counted, so you may put your cards down. All the votes in the cafeteria have been counted, so you can put your cards down as well. Okay, I have -- I would like to ask everyone who is voting in opposition, who is voting This auditorium has been counted, so you may put your ballots down, your cards down. Just so you're aware, they are still counting in the other room, so if you're in the other room, I don't know if you want to leave. Okay, we're all set here. Okay. If the people who are leaving could leave quietly, please. I'd like to announce the result of the vote. The vote is 362 aye in favor, 60 nay against. Motion passes. By two-thirds. Article Three. Excuse me. If you are leaving, please do so quietly, so that we can continue on and get out of here, basically. No need to have this go on forever. Article Three. Fire Department Command Vehicle. This will be a majority vote. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a presentation here by Chief Kenny. Is Chief Kenny here? Ah, there he is. Boy, I bet nobody has ever said that to you before. I couldn't see you. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to have time to present here. The project that we're looking at or trying to do is -- it's kind of got two moving parts. So Service One, which is a vehicle that our OICs, our Weekend On-Call Officer in Charge, officers use, as well as when we have details or do traffic control or things of that nature, that's the vehicle that is used. We're looking to replace that vehicle. It is a 2003 model. It is past its serviceable life. This is the current Service One. As you can see, it has some rust issues and some body rot. The other thing with this vehicle is there, the heat defrost and just the HVAC does not work. After speaking with some of my personnel, we came to the conclusion that this vehicle needed to be replaced. It wasn't worth putting the money into, given its age, and it is past its serviceable life. This is the current Car One, which is the vehicle that I use currently. It would be repurposed to replace the service vehicle, which is in poor condition. This is the picture or representation of what the desired Car One would look like, or what it would provide. So the biggest things from a response and command perspective is the space it allows, and then the cache of radios that it provides to allow for more effective communication, instant command boards, mapping, things of that nature to greatly enhance our situational on-seeing awareness, plus it has the capacity to fill a void the Fire Department currently has with not having a vehicle to tow our special operations trailer, or our boat, or our UTV vehicle. One of the things that I feel like is very important is that we have a means of doing it without personnel having used their own personal vehicles. These are just other examples or pictures to show representation of the current Car One versus what the new Response and Command Vehicle would look like. One of the things that is important that we would do is repurpose some of the lights from the current Service One, which would be being replaced, and place them on the current Car One, which it is underlit. Hopefully, I haven't been responding, and you all have had the pleasure of seeing me respond and being like, "Who is this weirdo driving up on my bumper, making all this noise with not much light flashing?" So this is just to display the difference in the amount of space that would be available for the equipment that, you know, we would need to carry, or whoever would be driving Car One, primarily be me, but the equipment needed to be carried, as well as the command module that's available. This is a look at the radio console in the current Car One versus what the new one would look like, or the desired one would look like. So hopefully, this would be the new Sherburne C1, a vehicle of this nature.
We have no formal presentation in our position to this article, so I'd just ask the Board of Selectmen if they wish to make a statement.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Michael Jaimo for the Board of Selectmen, and we unanimously support this. We support our new fire chief, and we support giving the Fire Department the equipment they need to do their job and protect the town.
Okay, this will be a majority vote, and I would like to do a voice vote on this. So I would like to ask the assistant moderator if she thinks that there are few enough people in the cafeteria that they may be able to fill in the seats here. Okay, so before we vote. In the meantime, we can begin the debate. If anyone would like to speak to this article, then approach the microphone, please.
Good evening. Sean Goldstein, still three Suri. And I hope people will interpret this purely from the perspective of trying to be fiscally disciplined, given we just blew a $2 or $3 million hole in our budget, we're already about $20 million in debt, if you include the bonds, pension, the pension from the schools, et cetera. So just ask a single question, which, first of all, that 12-year-old Service One, is it -- get it, I mean, that's beyond life. I mean, no -- I don't think people can challenge, "We shouldn't be driving, that doesn't look safe," okay? So the only question I would have is, did we consider buying, say, a four-year-old Explorer and putting some fancy lights in it? Probably cost 20 grand instead of 80. Just ask the question.
Chief?
There were, you know, obviously, a lot of options explored, and a lot of information gathered concerning this vehicle. One of the things that I did do was try to do a needs assessment, and speaking with my officer corps and people around town, one of the things that we have encountered, or the department has encountered, is personnel using their personal vehicles for hauling equipment, towing department trailers and things of that nature, which is, in my opinion, and actually, not just opinion, it's an unacceptable risk and liability that we're asking people that are already, in essence, volunteering their time and energy to save lives and property and protect people, to accept that liability or risk by towing those vehicles to an emergency scene, and also by hauling equipment and things of that nature. We needed a vehicle for the department to be able to use or have access to that could handle that and handle that capacity. Another Explorer would not do it, and therein lies the issue. We needed a larger vehicle, one that would better suit the service and response of what the Fire Department does, and also be able to embrace some of the roles and responsibility I have as well, as Emergency Management Director for the town. So for documenting and doing damage assessment and those type of things, and enhancing the communication capabilities, was also a very important factor in this.
Thank you. And I'd also like to ask all the people who are standing at the rear to please take a seat. And if you are voters, please do not sit in the non-voter section. There are a lot of seats up front. It's kind of like going to church, everybody sits in there.
Yes, Addie Mae -- can you hear me?
No.
No? No? Okay, so Addie Mae Weiss, 1 Jackson Road. I just wanted to make a quick comment on having -- I attended the advisory hearing where Chief Kenny did explain his rationale, and also presented the financial numbers of the rationale, and presented a lot of comps of other similar vehicles and what we would be looking at at the town, and a lot of information that is not possible to present here, but to let everyone know that this is -- this was well-researched, this had a lot of thought put into it, and it was supported by advisory and our selectmen for good reason.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this article? Okay, then we'll -- excuse me, we'll do a voice vote here, and this is a majority vote. The motion is to transfer $80,000 from free cash in the Treasury to purchase a new Fire Department Command Vehicle. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Article Four. This is a citizen's petition for recall of elected officials.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Daley.
I move that no action is taken on Article Four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, this is going to be a -- the motion here is a negative motion. That means that, and we will have discussion and so forth in a minute, but just so you're aware, a negative motion is a motion to take no action and, in so doing, defeat the article. A positive vote -- A positive vote, an aye... So that's an aye vote, is to say no to the article. A nay vote is to say the motion should not pass. It is not a vote for the article. It is simply a vote against the negative motion. I'll go over that again when it's time to vote, but... So there is a presentation to be made for this article, I believe, by Mr. Shea.
And don't move to close the debate. I want to thank those people who are here for staying, notwithstanding the fact that the place is practically empty. I assume that we have 100 people here. I'm going to ask that you vote against the motion to take no action, and I'm going to try to keep this as short as I can because I'm going to urge you to read what I think is one of the most articulate reasons, statements of reasons, why we should have a recall provision in the town of Sherburne. And if you take your warrant and look at the minority opinion written by Mr. Williams and voted in conjunction with Mr. Tai, I thank both of them. We think that the provisions that have provided the electorate with a way to remove an elected official when that official is unable to perform the duties of his office, unwilling to perform the duties of his office, incapable of addressing the changes of the positions due to the advancing... advances in relative technology and the new challenges facing the town. Remember, this particular article is... would be applied to all elected officials. I believe there are more than 100 elected officials in this town. It provides the flexibility to address unforeseen circumstances. Article four does. It allows the voters to address midterm issues requiring immediate action or correction. It's based on two premises. The premise that the Sherburne voters can be trusted to responsibly vote for an elected official to fill a position. Also, can be relied upon that those same voters will have the competence to remove an official from the office when either he is unable... he or she is unable to or unwilling to perform the duties of the office or to adjust to evolving challenges in the office. The integrity that we have the faith and the integrity of the voters of the town of Sherburne not to abuse the process, as has been alleged by some opponents to the recall. I want to point out that when we came... when you came in to the meeting, you were handed a bright yellow sheet, bright orange sheet, yellow, I guess. My wife tells me I'm colorblind. We have... If this motion is defeated, this motion to take no action is defeated, we are prepared to make an amendment to our proposal, and I also have an amendment to the selectman's proposal, which is Article five. So I ask you to vote no on the no action... Vote yes on... No, no, on the no action and yes on going forward. And that would give us an opportunity and you an opportunity to review the changes that we propose in both Article four and Article five.
Thank you, George. There's... I received no form for a formal presentation, but I'd like to hear if the... Oh, I'm sorry. The Board of Selectmen would like to make a comment on this.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Michael Giamo, for the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen unanimously opposes this article. This is a bad idea for a small community like Sherburne where we're all neighbors. It has the potential to be very divisive. We don't need a recall article. We need to encourage people to run for office, not make it so that candidates who step forward are subject to the risk of recall for no reason at all or for a whimsical reason or maybe for a legitimate reason, but this doesn't distinguish between any of those. This is a particularly bad form of recall article because it has no standards at all. If it passes an elected official like the town clerk or the planning board or select board or library trustees, it would be subject to recall for any reason, including taking a stand on a controversial issue, which means it could influence how people think and vote and act as your representative in town. Some people suggest that that's a good thing. I think recalling somebody in the middle of the term because they took a stand on an issue is not a good thing, and I think it discourages public participation and discourages good decision-making. The way this article works, someone who's the subject of a recall petition signed by just a small percentage of the voters is given the chance of resigning from office or facing the cost, inconvenience, embarrassment, et cetera, of being a candidate in a recall election to retain a seat that he or she may have just won a few months earlier. This can happen to some office holders multiple times during a three-year term, the way this is written, and the town has the expense of holding these electives... elections. It's punitive. It says that anyone who is recalled or who resigns instead of going through a recall election is ineligible for appointment to any town office for two years. And again, we don't need a way to get volunteers out of office because we disagree with them or we don't like their personality. We need to make it easier for people to share the privilege and work of serving the town. This is a bad article that's wrong for our small town. It's not well put together, and it will discourage public service. There may be a way to do a recall article that has clear standards, but this isn't it. We urge you to support the advisory motion.
Is... Thank you. Is there a debate on motion?
I would suggest that...
You have already spoken, George. So let's have Tom speak first.
Tom, Armston Hollis Street. As I said at the advisory hearing, we have seen this movie before, three or four years ago, when we also had two very similar articles presented for the town's consideration. In this case, one, even after the amendment on Article four, is still totally open-ended. I'm echoing what Mike Giamo just said. My feeling is totally in agreement with his on this. The other one, the selectman's, is probably too restrictive in terms of the grounds for recall. So I would hope in the future, if we have... we see the... if we defeat these two, if we see it again, that the selectman and George and his group get together, negotiate something, so you present one article to the town. All right? Now, having said that, I think it's a bad idea. We don't... I don't think we need a recall provision in the town of Sherburne. Yes, we're special and all that, but, you know, in my... almost 50 years in town, I can think of maybe one time when a recall might have been considered. So let's back away. Let's not try to echo 150 other towns who have done it. Let's think about what kind of town we are in Sherburne and consider whether we need this kind of disruptive and unsettling provision. I would suggest that if you have a problem with an elected official, write letters, go to the meetings, speak up. If necessary, get out the pitchforks and the torches. Do something informal, but forget about the recall. I don't think it makes sense.
Thank you, Tommy. Is there anyone else who has not yet spoken? Susie.
Hi, Susan Tyler, Western Avenue. Yes, I've been here before. We've all been here before. And as the first time that this warrant... this article went before the town meeting, the selectman came up with another version. Here we are again. The citizens put forth an article with signatures to get this before everyone. And again, the minute it got brought by the citizens, then another version gets brought forward. And so here we are, three years later, two articles. And as the gentleman before me just spoke, he said, "In 50 years, this may have been needed once, the ability to recall someone." So that rate there shows that this is not a frivolous tool that will be used frequently every six months for somebody's term. He said, "50 years, it may have been needed once." Well, guess what? What happens if it's needed next week and we don't have that tool? Or what happens if it's 49 years from now? At least we have the tool. Right now, we have nothing. Let's have the tool. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie.
Carol Mitchell on Coolidge Street. I think we need a recall provision. This may not be the correct one, but I would question the idea that just because we're small and we feel special and we're a family, we can all work this out. In the course of my social work career, I served on the National Committee on Ethics, and what we discovered in looking at small social service agencies is they thought everybody could get along, so they didn't need procedures, they didn't need things that were in place in bigger agencies. And I think small communities need this too, and we may never use it, but just because we're small doesn't mean we don't need it.
Thank you. Paul?
Paul Durensis, South Main Street, Sherburne. I'd make a couple of points. The first is, we have already seen this same identical article come before the town, and at that time, both advisory and various citizens pointed out a number of flaws in that article. And here we are today. None of those flaws have been fixed. We're back with the same thing that the voters have already rejected. The argument was made, we ought to trust the voters. I say, the voters have spoken. Let's trust what the voters have already said. Number two, I want to reemphasize the fact that there are two articles here, and the second article, Article five, is better than Article four. And one of those ways that it's better is that Article four has no standards at all. It allows anybody to be recalled for any reason. No reason needs to be stated. The lack of standards removing somebody from office means that any kind of motivation, hate, revenge, retaliation, someone not liking what church you go to, all of that kind of stuff, any of that can come into play. When you compare that to Article five, Article five says, if you're going to remove somebody, it has to be either for criminal activity, unethical behavior, or absenteeism from the job. If we're going to start somewhere with a recall, then I would say, start with the limited one and see if that does the job before you go to something that's so open-ended and so unfocused.
Thank you, Paul.
I want to suggest that the argument that we don't need a recall flies in the face of the fact that the advisory committee, when addressing Article five, indicated that it might have some merit to have a recall provision. If you look at the orange papers that we sent out, and I think it's quoted there, the Board of Selectmen also take the position that it's too small a town to have a recall. And yet, one selectman has filed Article five the same number of times that Article four has been filed. Same arguments. And so obviously, two members of the advisory committee accepted recall, Article four. The rest of the advisory committee voted in the majority that a recall provision would be desirable, not necessarily either one of the ones that are in front of you. The selectmen have put forward one. I would read that as that they think the recall provision is required. The proposal that is Article five, can I address that now? Article five?
I'm sorry. Debate is specific to the article on the floor.
I will argue that Article four says two things to me. Article four says, "I trust you. I trust you to do the right thing and not abuse the process." It also says that I believe that the people in this room would not engage in the activity that is suggested by the selectmen who just spoke. I listened to the debate on a very contentious article, and I was proud of the number of people who participated in that discussion and did not engage in name-calling.
Thank you, George. Thanks very much. Nancy?
Nancy Hess, South Main Street, Sherburne. We have seen these articles over and over. I hate to be at odds with our Board of Selectmen, but I tried to submit an article for recall that would pertain to my office, because I'm your collector, in case you don't know that. When I spoke with the Department of Revenue, they could not believe that we didn't have something in place. They thought it was totally irresponsible that we do not have some way to remove someone from office if they are not performing their job. So my suggestion is that you support... You vote down this and support the article, and perhaps that will be the impetus to get someone moving to amend this in the future so that it works for the town with some kind of restrictions or however. People will work on it. Now, with my article last year, Mike, the chairman of the selectmen, said that perhaps we could work on something for the next town meeting, and I'm counting on that, Michael, that is specific to the finance department because I think this takes too long. If you've got a problem in your finance department, this process takes too long to stop it. So I'd like to see an article in the future that will address that for an elected official, and we only got two in the finance department. One of them is me.
Nancy, let's keep the debate to the... The motion.
Okay. But I think this is a good start, and it might kick-start people to get together to refine this for perhaps a future amendment. So please vote no on the article, and when it's reissued by George, then vote yes on that.
Thank you, Nancy.
Skip Smith, 29 Coolidge Street. I just wanted to make the point that I know that basically, there's recall every three years. All the elected officials get... be elected every three years. And the other thing, I'm sure everyone in town has gone through some form of something in this town, and nothing moves fast. So I think that a three-year time span isn't... in Sherburne time span is not that short. So I think with things that happen and don't happen, we have a recall every three years.
Okay, there being no one else lined up at the mic. I will just run through it. Oh, okay. Last one, though, Chuck.
The Board of Selectmen voted to endorse no action on both of these articles. If we decide that we want a recall petition, I would urge us to support Article five. In terms of Nancy's point, if we're going to pass something and then amend it, I think it's far better to have a petition... I mean, a recall provision that is slightly narrower than we'd like than Article four, which is so broad as to have... I won't repeat many of the arguments that Mike made. I agree with him. I... in principle, I don't like either article, but I would urge you that if you want to vote for a recall provision, to support... vote for a recall provision, to support Article Five, not Article Four.
Okay, thank you. You want to speak again? Okay, this is the last time.
I'm not going to speak to Article Four.
Please.
I'm not going to speak to Article Four.
Okay, then, then.
The last speaker spoke Article Five.
I'm sorry, George. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Article Four.
I want to know why the selectman was allowed to speak for, against, for Article Five, when I wasn't allowed to speak against Article Five?
Well?
I'm just going to, I'm going to get up on Article Five again, so you might as well let me do it now.
All right, well, how about this? It's getting late, and if you would like to speak, the thing is, Article Five isn't before us right now.
Then you should have.
You're correct, I should have. Okay, so I just want to go again on reviewing the, the idea of a negative motion. Okay, the motion on the table right now is a negative motion. That means if you vote aye on this motion, you are voting to defeat Article Four. If you vote nay on this article, that vote is not alone sufficient to establish an affirmative action on the article. Defeating the motion of no action simply allows an alternate motion to be made. So if you are in favor of Article Four, you want to vote nay on the motion on the table. If you are against Article Four, you want to vote aye for the motion on the table. All right. So, voice vote here, and this is a majority. Article Four, recall of elected officials, citizens petition, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
I believe a majority. Hess?
Paper.
So if seven citizens ask for a paper vote, not a paper vote, a show of hands, we can do that. Are there seven citizens? One, two, three, four, five, okay, six, seven. Okay, so we'll do a show of cards here. All in favor of the negative motion that defeats the article, please raise your cards now.
I can't understand. That's part of the problem with being a selectman. You're mumbled.
Well, that's truly ambitious.
There we go.
One, two, three.
Okay. Yes votes, please put your cards down. on, so that you're sure your vote is counted. Okay, the motion passes, 124 to 32. Article Five. Just, just one second, Chuck. This is a, Article Five's recall of elected officials sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. It will be a majority vote.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Morrow.
I move that no action be taken.
Second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to express an opinion?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. For Article Five, this is the article that the Board of Selectmen proposed as an alternative to Article Four. Article Four having failed, we don't like this article really either. We would propose, and we voted unanimously, to defeat this article. We would propose that you vote yes for the advisory. But in saying that, I also see, and we see, the merits in Nancy's comments. I have had that conversation with her about financial irregularities and the need to have some way to address that in a financial context. And there may be other very specific situations that warrant a recall, and so I would commit on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to work with George and with Nancy to study that issue in the hopes of coming forward with something that was more of a compromise for the Springtown meeting.
Sorry. Is there debate on that, on this motion? Yes, we can. Yes. You approach the microphone, state your name, your address.
I would like to move that the, the question before the body, you refer to a committee to be appointed by the town moderator, and that would include at least one member of the Board of Selectmen and one member of the sponsors for Article Four. And any other members that the moderator would agree to appoint.
I think there should be a number.
Five.
Associated with five. Okay. So this is, since this is a motion to move to committee, it must be... Is, oh, is there a second for this motion?
I have a second.
All right, second. So, yes, could we have the motion up here, George? You filled out a form. Could we have it, please? Town, town, town council says yes. Yes. Oh, I see. Okay. Okay. If I can have your attention. Mr. Shea has offered a motion to refer Article Five to committee. That motion is debatable. It is a majority vote. I'll read the motion as he has produced it here. That Article Five be referred to a committee, that the committee be appointed by the moderator. It will contain at least, the committee will have at least one member of the Board of Selectmen. It, I can't read this. Oh, it will include one member of the sponsors of Article Four. The maximum size of the committee will be five. And recommend a, to recommend a proposed recall provision for consideration of the town meeting in spring 2018. Is there debate on this motion?
Second.
Is there a second, first of all?
Second.
Do we have a second? Debate?
I would ask you to vote no on this amendment. If you listen to the language carefully, what it says is that a committee will be created who has to come back at the April town meeting with a recall proposal. I think the commitment that has been made already by the Board of Selectmen to work with the financial officers of the town and with Mr. Shea, to look at ways to do a recall is a much better way to go. You don't have this kind of form...
Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
All right, second. So, yes, could we have the motion up here, George? You filled out a form. Could we have it, please? Town council says yes. Yes. Okay, if I can have your attention. Mr. Shea has offered a motion to refer Article five to committee. That motion is debatable. It is a majority vote. I'll read the motion as he has produced it here. That Article five be referred to a committee, that the committee be appointed by the moderator. It will contain at least, the committee will have at least one member of the Board of Selectmen. It, I can't read this. Oh, it will include one member of the sponsors of Article four. The maximum size of the committee will be five. And recommend a, to recommend a proposed recall provision for consideration of the town meeting in spring 2018. Is there a debate on this motion? Is there a second, first of all? Do we have a second? Debate?
I would ask you to vote no on this amendment. If you listen to the language carefully, what it says is that a committee will be created who has to come back at the April town meeting with a recall proposal. I think the commitment that has been made already by the Board of Selectmen to work with the financial officers of the town and with Mr. Shea, to look at ways to do a recall, is a much better way to go. You don't have this kind of formality. You're not going to have the open meeting law requirements with notices and keeping of minutes, trying to find volunteers willing to serve on this thing. And you don't have this kind of mandate that's put in there that they have to come back with a recall petition. So I'm urging you, vote no on this proposal.
Is there any other commentary on this? George, you've spoken once, I'm going to let the person here.
Good evening, I'm Deborah Hurley of Ward Lane. I would also urge you to vote no on this motion. As a simple matter of good governance, at 11 o'clock at night to be doing, considering a motion drafted on the fly, I don't think is an acceptable choice for our town. Thank you.
George?
I listened to, I listened to the debate carefully, and it would seem to me that the motion that I just made sets the groundwork for the kind of compromise that was cited as needed, both by members of the Board of Selectmen, and I would suggest by the people who I represented here, that signed the petition for Article four. We were prepared to modify the proposal for, we didn't get an opportunity to do that because the body voted negatively, affirmatively on the negative position. I think this creates a vehicle that will produce an acceptable recall provision that will get by the, get the approval of the advisory committee and the approval of the Board of Selectmen. And hopefully, the approval of the citizens of the town of Sherburne in the spring.
Mike?
If George is committing to a compromise that will get the approval of the Board of Selectmen, then that's, that's fine with us.
Robert?
Robert Johnson, 27... Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. When would this article need to be finalized to be eligible for the, this spring warrant?
Well, I would, I don't know if I, if I can answer that, but the, okay.
I didn't hear the answer.
The Springtown meeting warrant typically closes in early January or late December. This year, early January, not December.
Yeah. I'm in favor, basically, of what he's saying, and I'm one of the ones who signed the petition for Article four. But I think that the time is too short to get everybody together and work and have an article prepared in, by mid-January. So I'm not in favor of it because of the deadline of April of 18. If it says April of 19, then I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, debate being closed, I will take a vote now. This will be a majority vote on the motion to commit, to committee. Refer to, I'm sorry. Motion to refer to committee. All right, all in favor of the motion to refer to committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, I say the motion does not pass. The agenda of this special town meeting, oh, I'm sorry, so we, yes, we have, yes, I'm sorry, you got it. We now have the vote actually on Article five, which is a negative motion. And so a negative motion, I mean, an aye vote on Article, on the motion associated with Article five, which is a negative motion, defeats the article. A nay vote on Article five allows, it does, it prevents, it's not sufficient to establish any affirmative action on the article. Defeating the motion of no action simply allows an alternate motion to be made. So. Article five, to vote to defeat the article, vote aye. To vote to not defeat the article, vote nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
That's close. Are there seven? All right. I'm just going to call for a hand vote, because this is... All right. Yes, right, right. Just to be clear, when I ask you to raise your cards, if you are voting aye, you are voting to defeat Article five. If you are voting nay, you are voting not to defeat Article five, but you are not voting to pass Article five either. Is that confusing enough? All right, all in favor of the motion to take no action on Article five, please raise your cards. There we go. Okay, you may put your cards down. The vote is 81, aye, 28, nay. The motion passes. We have one more order of business before dissolving the meeting. I'd just like to point out that tonight is the birthday of a great American, Mr. George Morrell. With that taken care of, the agenda of the special town meeting being completed is the motion to adjourn. Second? All right. Motion passes.